The order, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Deanne will lead us with the good news report.
Good evening. Earlier today, as you had your board retreat this afternoon, you learned about plans to revamp and expand one of the options provided by the Sioux Falls School District to give our youngest learners a strong foundation in their educational journey. And now we want to share that information more broadly with the public now that we're broadcasting on KLEARN and live streaming as well. Junior kindergarten is a program for children who will be five years old on or before September 1st, but who may benefit from some additional time to develop their literacy and numeracy skills, fine and gross motor development, social, emotional growth. Junior kindergarten in the past has been offered only at Robert Frost Elementary and JFK Elementary Schools for the past several years, but we are happy to report that the Junior Kindergarten Academy will be expanding to include Cleveland and Hayward Elementary Schools this coming fall. So that will help us better address the needs of our entire community where we will have four locations. So any student in the Sioux Falls School District could enroll in Junior Kindergarten Academy at one of those four locations if they are five by the age or by the date of September 1st. That seems to always be a question in the minds of parents. Is my child ready for the demands of kindergarten? Junior Kindergarten Academy is a free, all-day model where academic instruction takes place for one half of the day, and then the other half of the day is spent on social, emotional, physical growth, skills that really help the student become more confident and more familiar with with things moving forward. So this might be a great program for a summer birthday. That seems to always be kind of the question. My child was born, you know, mid-July. Should they go to kindergarten? Well, the ultimate decision lies in the hearts and minds of the parent as they are that child's closest contact. But certainly, this provides more opportunities, more availability at those four locations, Cleveland, Hayward, Robert Frost, and JFK. So all of this enrollment will start February 3rd. It does not mean that you have to enroll on February 3rd, but we know a lot of parents are asking questions about that. Seems like you turn the calendar and it's like, oh, my kid's going to go to school in the fall. I better start thinking about this. So that's why we wanted to share this information with you today. So enrollment for kindergarten and junior kindergarten academy will begin on February 3rd. Online registration and applications, that's the very first step. Then all families are invited to a preview event on March 6th at their school. That's from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and you'll be meeting the teachers, turning in documents, getting familiar with the layout of the school, that type of thing. And that really helps us with planning for enrollment in the fall so we can assign teachers and have, you know, the lay of the land, kind of understand that. So we really want to encourage families to make that March 6th event important. So first of all, March 3rd, mark your calendar.
February.
I'm sorry, February 3rd, mark your calendar, yes, because that's when enrollment opens. And then March 6th is an event that we would love for every family to participate in. And would you believe, school starts Thursday, August 21st, 2025. So it will be here before we know it. We will be pushing out a lot of social media in the next week explaining these options. There are some changes to what was known as junior kindergarten in the current year, and we want to make sure families are aware of this option in four locations. It's free, it's all day. If you live in the area that includes busing, busing would be an option for you, and CLC After School Care would also be an option. Again, that's that's on a basis where you have to sign up and if you get in, that kind of thing. But we just wanted to to share this information. It's relatively new, and it's available out there now on our website, explaining the differences between what kindergarten is and what junior kindergarten academy can offer as well. So we just encourage our families to start having those conversations, start deciding which path you'd like to take your student down, and be great to have everybody starting another school year in a couple of months.
Thank you. And just to reiterate to, at our retreat, we also were able to see data for our students who participated in a junior kindergarten type of program and the advance that they had made above their peers who hadn't. And so this isn't just an eight hours of playtime, but it's also not sit at a desk for, you know, six, eight hours either. It's a good mix of things that really help students to acclimate. And if you have a, if you're at home with your child now and have never done daycare or have never done preschool, this would be a really great option for them. Or if you are, like you said, you had that summer birthday and you're not looking forward to paying for another year of daycare, but you also are not quite sure about your kid, like, I think it's, it's a really good option to consider. I've never met anybody who regretted holding their kid back, but I have met people who regretted sending them as young summer birthdays, so.
That's 100%. Personally, I always tell people, I never hear people saying, oh, shoot, I should have sent my kid to school when they were five. You never hear people say that. You also never hear them say, oh, I should have let them quit piano a lot sooner. Nobody says that.
Both good points. Thank you. Awesome. Yeah, so watch social media and February 3rd, it opens, and we'd love to have people sign up. Thanks, Deanne. All right, can I get a motion and a second for approval of the minutes for the meeting held on January 13th, 2025, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. We do not have anybody wishing to speak with us today. Can I get a motion and a second for approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. We do not have any conflicts of interest today. Approval of the consent agenda, 9A through F, a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. And then we have the supplemental consent agenda, claims to Stanford Healthcare, A1 through 3, a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved with one abstention from myself. And now on to the reports of the superintendent.
We have three items tonight under the reports for the superintendent. The first one will feature Molly Satter and, I don't know, Dr. Nold, are you accompanying Molly Satter or is she all on her own tonight?
All on her own.
All on her own, solo tonight. She'll share a report with us that kind of goes over the breadth and the depth of the services that our health staff provide to our students. And then we'll have an update from Deanne Conrad tonight on community relations and comm ed. We're going to actually make her earn her keep, not just do the good news report tonight, a real report. And then finally, we'll have a brief legislative update from Mr. Veek where we'll go over the positions that have been referred so far for board approval on those positions to make them official. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Molly Satter.
Evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to provide you with an update on health services. Health services directly impacts our priority areas of academic success, well-being, community engagement, and effective use of resources. School nurses support student success by keeping students healthy, safe, in school, and ready to learn. Nurses minimize health-related barriers to learning through health intervention, education, and communication. And a few quick facts are, in 1902, the first school nurse reduced absenteeism by helping students and their families manage contagious diseases. And research shows that for every $1 spent on a school nurse, society saves $2.20. These savings come from preventing costly emergency room visits and parents missing time at work to care for sick children. And then students with a full-time school nurse have about half as many student illness or related or injury-related early releases from school. Health services related to a student's health impairment or disability are necessary when the student cannot access their education unless the health services are provided. Health services might be part of a 504 plan or an IEP plan. Nurses can provide specialized care for students with a variety of health needs, including medication administration, ventilator, tracheostomy care, catheterization, tube feeding, seizure care, diabetic care, respiratory care, as well as other unique medical needs. In addition to those specialized nursing cares, nurses provide nursing assessments and first aid and treatments for injuries and illnesses that arise during the school day. Nurses provide preventative care, including routine hearing, vision, health, and dental screens, as well as flu shots. School nurses attend our attendance meetings, 504 meetings, IEP meetings, to provide teams with critical medical information. And then students, school nurses develop care plans that are critical in outlining a student's health needs so staff can respond appropriately. And in this past year, our nurses created over 2,300 individualized care plans for students. When it comes to behavioral health, school nurses are often identify and address student behavioral health concerns and serve as an early warning system for children and families in crisis. Nurses might be the first to identify early warning signs of abuse and neglect, and nurses often identify if a stomach ache or a headache is truly that or if it's a sign of something more going on. Students often feel comfortable sharing mental health concerns with the school nurse, so a nurse plays a critical role in identifying mental health concerns and seeking the assistance of the school team, including school counselors. And then at the secondary level, school nurses provide interventions related to high-risk behaviors such as drinking, smoking, vaping, drug overdose, and teen pregnancies. So the barriers to care for many of our students, there are a variety, and they may impact a student's ability to receive, or there's many barriers that might impact a student's ability to receive medical care. This might be related to a lack of insurance or an available healthcare provider. Other barriers, such as job or transportation constraints, can impact a parent's ability to take a child for treatment. Sometimes the school nurse is the only healthcare provider a student has access to. School nurses provide health education to families and refer them to their healthcare provider as needed, and they provide care coordination to help families enroll in public health insurance programs, finding a medical home, and arranging for transportation to appointments. And in this past year, school nurses made 20,277 parent contacts to communicate health needs, provide health education, and assist with provider referrals. So some of our numbers at a glance here, we have 32.5 FTE of school nurses who provide services across the district in 38 buildings. Nurses provide 280 daily scheduled treatments, like, such as catheterization, tube feedings, and respiratory treatments. This does not include our daily oral medications or intermittent treatments that can vary day to day, such as seizures, diabetic cares, as needed, asthma cares. Students with diabetes in the district, we are currently at 93. This number continues to increase and has increased by 32 students in the past five years. These students are being diagnosed younger and need a great deal of nursing assistance. And as you can see here, there's a list of students' daily diabetic schedule, and that can be up to eight times their visiting the nurse scheduled, and that doesn't include highs and lows or if they're having an off day. So that can get to be quite a lot for some of those students. We have 253 students with seizure disorders. That has increased by 26 students in the past five years. We have 416 students with life-threatening allergies, and we have 1,304 students with So in addition to student health needs, our nurses sometimes respond to our staff health needs, and in this past year, they responded 2,830 times, 35 times. We provided 759 staff flu shots. We administered the hepatitis B series, which is three shots, for 20 different staff. We provided, excuse me, we provided flu shots to 476 students. We have partnered with the Lions and Sartoma Club to provide vision and hearing screens for all first, third, and fifth grade students. That's approximately 5,700 students, and then additional students as needed. We partnered with Falls Community Health to provide increased health opportunities for underserved in our community, including school-based health centers at Hawthorne, Terry Redlin, and Hayward Elementary Schools. And then we partnered with Dakota Dental Mobile to provide dental care to 386 students with an estimated cost of over $394,882 in direct dental services. So in summary, school nurses minimize health-related barriers to learning through health interventions, education, and communication. And school nurses provide vital services that support student success by keeping students healthy, safe, in school, and ready to learn. And with that, I would ask the board to please acknowledge the update on district health services, and I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Actually, probably more of a comment. I know with Sioux Falls, with the wonderful health systems that we have in town, that we're kind of a magnet for families to come in who have children that have more critical needs. And so when I see your numbers increasing of some of the services you provide, I kind of attribute it to that. I don't know if that you would agree with that or not.
Absolutely. That's our experience is that we hear of these families that have moved here because we have these great health systems, and they're coming here to get closer to their care. And so we do see that often.
And I also think that the average person in our community would be very surprised at the amount of healthcare that our school nurses provide for our students and our staff. So I just want to thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Definitely echoing the thanks. The question I have is based around the school-based health centers. Could you just expand a little bit more on those offices? Because touring it was very eye-opening. And another area of like, wow, if people just knew what we offered, it's just incredible, those partnerships.
I'm happy to share a little more about that. So we have a great partnership with the city of Sioux Falls. Falls Community Health and Dental have full clinics where students can be seen for, with parent consent. We can take students down and they can be seen by a healthcare provider. So they typically have a physician assistant or a nurse practitioner there, and parents are invited to attend that appointment with the student, or they don't have to if we have that consent, and they can be seen, they can run various tests and provide, you know, prescriptions for the parents to fill, to take care of the student, depending on what they find out. They also have full dental operatories, so they send out dentists who can see students right there in the school, do preventative care, and provide treatment right there. So it's just, you can't even put the value on having that in those schools where, you know, that parent, it's hard for them to get away. It's, they don't have the insurance, health insurance or Medicaid because Falls Community Health is a federally qualified health center, so they're able to see those students at minimal or no cost. And so it's been a wonderful partnership, and we started that about 2008, 2009. And we continue to look at ways that we can grow that program because it's been so successful where it's at.
Thank you. Yes. Anything else? No? As a nurse myself, I echo the thanks, and I know that it's so different than when even we were in school, you know, what people went to the nurse for. It was, needed a Band-Aid, or, you know, you felt hot, or whatever it might be. And now those things are routinely cared for by many of our clerical.
Yes.
And our nurses really are taking on those higher-level skill needs for our students. So we're grateful for their knowledge and experience that they can use to take care of our fragile students at times. So thank you again.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion and a second to acknowledge the update on district health services, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That is acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here to earn my keep as the superintendent said. Good evening, board members. I'm here to provide you with an overview of the scope of the work done by the Office of Community Relations. When you look at the Office of Community Relations, it's really communications and community education. So I want to go through a little bit of what we offer and what our team does. We are responsible for coordinating both internal and external communication, public relation services that foster strong partnerships between the district, each department, our schools, all stakeholders. And this work really takes many forms, including mass communication, print materials, e-newsletters, social media, events, activities, press conferences, the live broadcast of this board meeting this evening, and then hundreds of community education courses also. And so our job, we see it as wanting to showcase all of the wonderful things that are happening in Sioux Falls School District to let taxpayers know that their work, their money is being spent wisely. So when I joined the district 20 years ago, we had three tools we used in communication. That number has jumped now to 15 tools that we use to manage communications. One of the original, back from when I joined, was our website. And that is currently, our website has been in function in its current form since December 2021. Our content on our website is refreshed almost daily. We had a redesign done in mid-December 2024, and that was to better reflect the needs of our users. We look at page analytics and determine our high-traffic pages and high-volume pages, making sure that we have all of the information that is needed out there, and also increase in order to increase our search functions as well, so that if somebody comes in and and. in order to increase our search functions as well, so that if somebody comes in and puts a question in the search or puts a keyword in the search, that it will indeed find that information for them and take them to the appropriate place. A couple of pages that we spent considerable time on bolstering our counseling services page. Also, you heard me mention kindergarten, junior kindergarten, and we're doing some work on early childhood as well, trying to really highlight those pages and make sure we have all the information that's helpful to parents. In addition to the website, the partner platform to the website is our app, our free downloadable app, and we have 13,300 downloads on that app so far. So both tools, of course, include translation services in many of our high-volume languages as well, and so that communication is important to us for all families in the district. Thrill Share is the tool that we use that helps us send mass communication messages out to families. We sent more than 11,000 Thrill Share messages in the last year. Those messages can be sent by the district or by individual schools as well, and so that helps us communicate important information to our families as well. Then KLEARN TV is one of our longest-standing communication tools used in the district. We are constantly putting out new information on our website and on KLEARN TV, and that can be viewed on Cable Channel 20 or Midco Channel 595. And we also have On Demand that people can go to our website and re-watch anything that's available out there as well. We've had more than 100 fine arts events scheduled for this calendar year. And tonight, Ben Schumacher, who you've come to know as video extraordinaire, is out recording one of those concerts so that families who aren't able to participate or aren't able to be there can also access that programming. We have 250 varsity sports events that were featured in the last calendar year as well. That takes a lot of time to go out, record the event, then you come back, you have to post-produce it, catalog it, upload it, and schedule it for playback. So again, another valuable tool in KLEARN TV. We also do the videos that you've become accustomed to for Teacher of the Year, the Retirement Banquet, theater productions, both elementary, as in Eugene Fields' wonderful presentations they do every year, all the way up to the high school talent shows, which are really fun to watch, training videos, parades, marching band events, all kinds of different things like that. Then, of course, we have YouTube. We started that channel in 2010. We have nearly 2,000 videos available on demand for viewing and 10,900 subscribers who have accessed our videos 3.5 million times. One of my favorite stories about YouTube is, happened about five years ago, where we had a call from a special education director from another state who said, "You have some training videos on there, and I just want you to know, if you see the numbers go through the roof, it's because we're telling our staff to watch your training videos." So not only are we doing good work for staff members of the Sioux Falls School District, but others have come to rely on the videos that we're putting out, and that good work is being shared in other states as well. So little feather in our cap there for that one. Then last summer, we had an opportunity to hire an intern, and he set up the Sioux Falls School District archived YouTube channel. So we have had decades of great work done for our cable access channel, and many of those items were sitting on a shelf, not being used. And these are things that were prior to 2010 when we started YouTube. So he spent all summer cataloging and organizing those videos and uploading some of the most important to our now YouTube channel called SFSD Archive YouTube Channel. And so you can go out there and watch things from years and years ago. Not everything, there's like, you know, you're not going to find the concert from 1987, but there are some really great items out there, including an interview with Senator George McGovern, the first high school graduation at Roosevelt, a program of historical information of OWL TV. That's what it was originally called. Does anybody know why it was called OWL TV?
O'Gorman, Washington, Lincoln?
O'Gorman, Washington, and Lincoln are the three schools that sent students to participate. Well, we knew we were behind the times when we have had Roosevelt for a lot of years, and we had never acknowledged that. And now, of course, we have Jefferson as well, and so it was time to make that change. Another tool we use frequently is Remind, and that is a texting tool that our teachers have the ability to use. It's very popular among our coaches and activity leaders. And while that is a great tool to have, we also know that many elementary, what works for elementary teachers doesn't necessarily work for middle-school teachers or high-school teachers or specific to certain activities like band and choir and that type of thing. So that is a tool we can continue to monitor and will be determining the effectiveness of that moving forward. K-12 Insight offers the Engage and Let's Talk platforms. Engage is a survey tool, and I put this on here Friday on the cell phone survey. We had 9,200 responses by Friday, but today that number is 10,600 as of about 3:00 this afternoon. So we've had great ability to receive feedback from our parents through the Engage platform. Let's Talk is the tool where people can submit a question, a compliment, a concern, anything along that line. It's available right on our main page on a flag on the right-hand side of our website. So we have expanded the use of that. We started in 2019 with just central administrators, and in 2023, then we expanded that to all schools as well. Our S-MOR newsletters have become popular and watched for by not only our families in the district, but our staff as well. At the district level, S-MOR is used to send out weekly updates on strategic initiatives, messages from the superintendent. It's an easy-to-use platform that really can help build a culture and create a community within a school as well. Then Dr. Stavum always wanted a TV show, and I haven't come up with a 30-minute TV show yet for her, but we did get her a podcast. So in the last calendar year, we had 14 episodes covering everything from the launch of esports to featuring some of our parent-child teaching pairs in the Sioux Falls School District, where we have more than one generation of a family teaching in our classrooms, preview of our Lincoln High School trip to New York for the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, all kinds of things like that. And then I want to highlight community education as well. Community education provides 625 classes in the calendar year 2024 with 5,283 registrations. This is really a fantastic program that is driven by interest and community trends. If something is trending, we're going to try to find an instructor to teach a class for that. More than, excuse me, I'll back up here. We produce two catalogs annually, and our mission for community education is to improve community life and the lives of individuals by providing positive experiences and learning opportunities. Really gives us an opportunity to invite people into our schools and have a touchpoint with the Sioux Falls School District, even if they don't have children in our schools. There's a statistic that is widely used that at any one point in time, 80% of a public does not have a child enrolled in the public schools. So that's young professionals who don't yet have children. It's middle-aged people like empty nesters. It's folks who've come to retire here, and people know they can count on the Sioux Falls School District for good programming beyond just that preschool through 12th grade education. And then finally, the last lovely thing we get to do is work with our community on community groups who are looking for indoor recreation spaces. As you know, our schools are highly utilized throughout the day, lots of activities, CLC after school, and people always say, "Well, what happens in schools in the evening?" Well, in the year 2024, we processed 241 permits for community organizations to use our facilities in the evenings. That use, if I just take from 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM, is 7,227 hours of use, and most of that is not charged to the nonprofit organizations, because if we have a person in the building who's working, mostly our custodians, then that is not, there's not a fee charged to that community organization. So this is, you know, the YMCA, MB, Scouts, all of those organizations we're able to work with and provide, again, greater value for our community and our stakeholders. So that brings me to the end. And in summary, we do a lot of communication. We do routine communication, emergency communication, really trying to be transparent and provide the information to our community so they can see what's going on inside our classrooms, in our auditoriums when there's a concert, on the court, varsity sporting events and such, and then, of course, community education enrichment as well. So with that, I would ask you to acknowledge the overview of the work done by the Office of Community Relations.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Looks like you've been busy.
You know, we like to, we prefer to stand back behind the camera and capture everything else that is going on. But yes, it's...
Well, it's really good stuff. That's what I'd say to you. It's many comments about people, and when I ask them things, they'll say, "Well, look on the website, but it's there somewhere."
Yeah, I just, I think it's amazing, even in the almost 12 years that I've been on the board, from where we started to where we are now, and the difference in communications, and the things that we've tried and then abandoned because it didn't work for us, the things that we've tried and stuck with because it did work for us. And I think that's going to be ever-changing. That's going to continue to evolve over time, but it's important for us to be able to reach our stakeholders, whatever makes sense to them. And so I agree, you guys have done an amazing job of just getting clear communication out. I know, I appreciate it. I've used your services many times in the last few years for press releases and things like that, so always appreciate the extra work that you guys put in. I have been a user of Community Ed, and I would love to tell people to go out and find something, because there is something for everything. We did a pickleball class, and we went to Memorial, and they taught us all the rules, and it was great. And a lot of those people are now still playing, and you know, it's a new hobby.
Are you?
A little bit, but my husband's not. But yeah, and I mean, there's cooking classes, there's driver's ed, which is mentioned, and I don't think people really realize that that's a community ed class, but photography, stained glass. I mean, if you have an interest that you want to learn about, there's probably a class for it. So they're mostly located here, right? But they could be at a variety of places around town as well.
Yes, mostly, we try to get them into our facilities, but sometimes it just makes more sense, like stained glass. We couldn't possibly have a stained glass class outside of a stained glass business. And so some of those things just make sense, but our partnerships with our businesses and our community, they see the value of community education. They want to be part of, you know, making that available to all stakeholders. And so they reach out to us and say, "Hey, I have an idea for a class." That's exactly right. That's what we want to happen. We want it to be a successful venture for both our business community and our school district community as well.
Sure. So if there's anybody that's watching or listening, and they have a special skill or something they'd like to share, they would just reach out to your department?
Absolutely. Reach out to our department. We, as I said, do a catalog twice each year. We are in the process of moving from one software to another, and our catalog is still in print production right now. We should have it back and into mailboxes coming up here shortly. But plan ahead and get on our calendar for a class, teaching a class next go-around. We'd love to do something new.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. Can I get a motion and a second to acknowledge the overview of the Community Relations Department?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is acknowledged.
Legislative update. We track bills, of course, every year. So far, we've tracked 33 bills. We're going to go through those quickly tonight, and when I say quickly, unlike the ant, I mean it. So we are going to go through them quickly. We talked earlier in our earlier meeting today about upcoming important legislative dates. January 30th is the last day for unlimited bills, individuals, and I think they can do one a day after that. February 5th is the last day for individual bills, and February 6th is the last day for committee bills. Those usually come in from the governor, and they introduce them on the governor's behalf. So I will start. I'm going to go fast. If you have questions, stop me, and then either I'll answer them or one of those folks over there who write a lot of these opinions will answer them too. So we'll get going. House Bill 1002 requires all certified educators to take a course in South Dakota Indian Studies. We support that. House Bill 1003 amends definitions pertaining to the school funding formula. There's no real substantive changes there, so we support that. House Bill 1004 expands the DOE obligation to pay tuition for PRTF placements for homeschool, private school, and truant kids. We're neutral on that. It really doesn't affect us too much. House Bill 1009 provides for the creation and use of South Dakota Educational Empowerment Accounts voucher bill. We oppose that, and we consider that a key bill. House Bill 1010 requires cost model reports for certain programs and institutions, including DOE for general and sped. It's trying to look at, it's a bill that's trying to look at what really is 3% inflation, whichever is less enough for many different state organizations and schools as well. So we support that bill. House Bill 1017 requires the acceptance of cash payment for admissions to a school-affiliated event. We oppose that bill, passed out of committee today. House Bill 1019 eliminates certain property taxes on state owner, basically state aid owner, occupied local effort on that. We say amend that, and we have it a key bill, because if you take out the homeowners in the general fund levy portion of it, if a school ever wants to opt out again, it's just ag and commercial paying the full freight of that, and we don't have much ag. So in this district, it would be commercial. House Bill 1020 establishes education savings accounts. That's another voucher bill. We oppose that, and again, that's a key bill, just like 1009. So those are the two voucher bills. House Bill 1035 establishes grant funding for security enhancements in both public and accredited non-public schools. We have a minor amendment we'd like on that bill. House Bill 1039 repeals the programs reimbursing a teacher or school counselor for earning national board certification. We oppose that. House Bill 1040 reduces the state's contribution to a subsidized dual-credit program. We oppose that. We want that to stay where it is. House Bill 1041 revises and repeals certain provisions relating to the state library and state library... and State Library Board. We oppose that. It will affect our ability to borrow some, you know, different videos, items, and whatnot, like anything, software. House Bill 1048 requires that cash be accepted, another cash bill. This applies to basically everybody. We oppose not just schools. We oppose that for the same reason as the school bill. House Bill 104054 requires school districts to implement a policy that would authorize an individual to voluntarily preach at schools, I think. We oppose that bill. House Bill 1059 clarifies the meaning of teleconference for purposes of meeting requirements. We support that bill. House Bill 1068 would allow students to wear military decorations at a school graduation ceremony. We're neutral on that. 1077 provide for the inclusion of education regarding mental health in South Dakota Health Education. We're neutral on that. 1089 establishes parameters for the reimbursement of school districts that provide free or reduced-priced meals. We would like to amend that. They don't have in there that, it says schools have to allot, give reduced meals for free, but it doesn't reimburse for that. So that would be the amendment we'd want. We support the concept, though. House Bill 1074 modifies individuals eligible to sign an affidavit of homelessness. I think what it includes are, are counselors and social workers. We support that bill. House Bill 1090 establishes the crime of hazing and provides a penalty therefore. Hazings against our rules. We're neutral on that. 1092 makes an appropriation for student, teacher stipend grant program. Have that as opposed. Are we opposing that, Kirk? Oh, yeah, I think I got that wrong. Yeah, we're neutral on that. Sorry about that. 1092. House Bill 1093 requires the board of a school district to hold a capital-L bond election in conjunction with a primary or general election. We oppose that. Timing on those things can be important, and that would, if you're in an odd-numbered year, you'd be way off on that. House Bill 1094 modifies laws regarding school bus safety. Basically says if you have a camera on your stop sign, on the school bus stop sign that pops out on your stop, you can use that video in a court case. So we support that. 1105 just came in when we were meeting today earlier. Requires state motto in every classroom. We have it in every school. Now, this goes to every classroom. I'm talking about, like, what, 1,500 classrooms, maybe? I mean, we oppose that. House Bill, our Senate bill, we're onto the Senate bills now? Oh, I was going to say, you can follow along at that QR code. I'm going through this fast. You can read, I didn't want to put the website up. It'd be really long. If you hit that QR code, you can go in and read all the detail on all this stuff. Senate Bill 9 makes the calendar an appointment log of the head of state departments or persons holding statewide offices, makes them open to the public. Problem is, the bill, the bill also includes work, basically working papers, which would be like my little thing I got right here that I'm writing on, we think, maybe. So we think it's a little too broad, and it's broader than their title. So we have amend on that. Senate Bill 51 requires display of the Ten Commandments in schools and dictates history and civics curriculum. We oppose that. It's not really the legislature's job to dictate curriculum. That's the Board of Education standards. Senate Bill 55 revises the property taxes for school districts and revises general and special ed. We have amend on that. They've got it in at 1.25. Inflation was over 3 point, was about 3.14%. We're saying they should fund the formula at the 3%, which is what the law requires. Senate Bill 70, oh, yeah, and that's a key bill. Senate Bill 70 modifies the maximum sparsity benefit a school district is eligible to receive. That's fine. It hasn't inflated in years. Basically, it's going to put an inflation factor on it. There's not very many sparse schools, and they can't combine. That's why they get the sparsity factor. Senate Bill 71, students with parental permission can drop out of school at the age of 17. We'd oppose that bill unless it was amended to at least say if they drop out, then that doesn't count against the statistics of the school they drop out from. Because right now, they can go, they can, they can homeschool, and then they drop off fear list and go to the homeschool list. So if this is going to pass, it should be, basically be treated the same as the homeschool, opt-out of school. Senate Bill 74 requires the annual publication by the AG of an explanation of the open meeting laws of the state. That's fine. But then it says every year, we have to go over that, the school board does, and every other public entity. There's a zillion rules we have to follow. We don't go over any of them every year. I mean, that we're required to. So we oppose this bill. Senate Bill 85 provides property tax relief to senior only. It would be very minimal impact on any school district. We, we are neutral on that. Will cost us a little bit of money. Senate Bill 101 provides a tax credit to limit, basically a maximum 3% increase excluding new construction or opt-outs on a home. So you'd say if your, if your values went up 10% and state aid went up 3, I mean, you basically, there, there, it would be 7% would go, would go off that, and we would lose state aid on that. Schools would, not just we. So we can't, we can't support that bill, because schools will, there's no makeup factor for that in the state aid formula. Finally, Senate Bill 103 prohibits the use of vote centers in elections. There's a handful, maybe a little bit more, of counties that use those. We use them in odd-year elections, vote centers. I don't know why they're against this. We, the first year we tried them, we were the first entity in the state to do them. We did a survey of voters and asked them how they liked. 85% said they preferred them. So I don't know where this comes from. It's coming from a Sioux Falls, so I just laid it off. But we oppose that. So that is, that's the bills we've seen so far. Supposedly, there's 600 more out there in the hopper. They won't all be, they won't all be education bills, but I would stand by for questions, and I would ask you to approve the positions presented tonight with the one change to Kirk's bill, whatever that number was.
Quick question on Senate Bill 51 with the Ten Commandments. I feel like I read that it was, you had to display and teach that at three different points in the student's education, one in elementary, one in middle, and one in high school. Is that still part of this bill? It's not mentioned in the write-up, so I just want to make sure. Did it get changed to just posting it, or did it get, is it the same? It's posting and teaching?
Yeah, that's my understanding. It says in each school it should be taught, or in the curriculum. So that would mean three times, K through 12. And that was our position about the curriculum being left to the local school boards. The Board of Education standards sets standards for the state. Local school boards adopt curriculum.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just, I'll save my comments on that. On HB 1017, that's the cash bill, I just really need to stay out of the comments of things online. But I just want people to understand that we implemented that this fall and have been watching it very closely in order to make sure that we were able to accommodate for anybody that wanted to attend an event. And there's been some comments about how people came and asked the board, and so I think Dr. Stavum looked back. There were four people, there were four people who came and talked to us. But the concerns that were brought by those four people were not great enough, considering the benefits that we had gained for hundreds of other people. And so it's not that they weren't heard. It's not that we didn't care. It's that we make decisions for the best reason or for the best outcomes for our students and our community. We have had many, many comments about the ease of use and how it has sped things up to get in and out of events. Our students have activity passes. So for the people who are saying that it's excluding students who maybe don't have the resources or don't have an electric, you know, electronic access to an account, students get an activity pass. They don't have to have, you know, they don't have to go online and buy something or buy a ticket every single time. And if anybody needed a paper copy or a printed-out copy, our athletic directors went above and beyond to accommodate any student that had that request, or any family, for that matter, not even just students. If you've ever been to an event at a Sioux Falls public school, we have some really great volunteers who sit at those tables and take your money, hand you a program, things like that. I don't want those people walking out of the school with $2,000 in an envelope. That's not safe, and it doesn't make sense. And so when you're talking about schools like us that have high volumes of people, spectators coming and going, it just does not make sense from a safety perspective or from a, an effectiveness in a, yeah, as a business perspective. So, and then one last thing is, you know, we, we look at how many people attend our events. And looking back at football season this fall, was, was, which was one of our very first larger events that we had, where we had the electronic payments, and our attendance was up. So it was not a deterrent for people to, to not attend. More people attended, and whether that was a direct result of it being easy, we can't say that. But it certainly wasn't down in numbers, and people are saying, I'm not going to go because I can't figure that piece of it out. So again, as the theme has been in many cases, let the school districts do what they need to do to operate their business and to serve their communities. And this is just another example of overreach, of really just stay out of it. It doesn't matter to you. It shouldn't matter to you. And unless they're going to start giving us more money for a lot of things, I think that they should work on the things that matter and stop worrying about what's hanging on our classroom walls and what specific things are taught and how we allow people into sporting and activities. I just think they have a lot more important work to do than what they're doing out there right now. So I've really been on my soapbox today, and I apologize, but that's my two cents. Anybody else?
I think that was a nickel.
Thanks, Mark. Okay. Any other things to comment on or change? Otherwise, can I get a motion and a second to confirm the positions as stated with the one correction to neutral?
So moved.
Second, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those legislative positions are confirmed. And then finally, we have a few policies up for review.
Yes, thank you. Bringing forward five policies tonight on behalf of the Policy Review Committee. This is a part of the continual review of our policies and regulations. These are up for approval tonight on a review revise with only minor revisions to just one of the policies. So the policy's up tonight without any changes, BI, BIA, BIB, and BIBA. Those are all board policies in the B section. And then finally, the one with minor changes is BG, the School Board Policy Process. And the change here is just an update of the review revise of policies to our current practice, which is what we're doing tonight. So if you don't have any questions, I'd ask for approval of these five policies on a review revise.
Anything from our policy representatives and no?
I think we're good.
No, they're good. Good changes.
Okay. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those policies are approved. Anything else to come before the board?
No, I would, I would just add that the legislative session is very much at play, and our representatives and senators are there governing for the people. And so anyone in our community can share their opinions with our area legislators in addition to the positions that the school district takes as formal positions. This is a good reference if people want to see what the formal position is. But I think it's really important that constituents share their views, because when you lose that balance and perspective in hearings, you get a very limited perspective on an issue that you're going to make into a law, and that's really important. So thank you for your comments, and thank you for your work from all of you, encouraging our legislators to consider the work that they're doing that will impact things for many years to come.
And then just one last reminder regarding feedback is that cell phone survey does expire at the end of this week. So if you are a parent or guardian or a student who received that or, or a staff member and haven't done that, please do complete that. We are, we are thrilled with our participation so far, but we would take every voice that wants to give us feedback. We really appreciate that. So, all right. Can I get a motion and a second to adjourn, please?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.